I call this, the meeting to order. I call this meeting to Kendall Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a core of our board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code Chapter 551. Please join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, first on our agenda is roll call. Ms. Maria Cruz Perez.
Present.
Ms. Esteban Serta.
Present.
Mr. Sean Glovier.
Present.
Ms. Debbie Villa Gomez.
Here.
Ms. Felicia Moody.
Here.
Daryl Owens is here and Ms. Maria Douglas is on her way. We expect her any minute now. Okay, alright, so. And next on our agenda, section three, will be public comments on the agenda. Are there any signees for? There is no one signed up for any public comments on agenda items. And I have the list showing that there's no one signed up for public comments on non-agenda items. We'll then move to section five, Special District Recognitions. Mr. G.
We have Paul Wards. We only have two this year. We have in Kendall High School, Daniel Wager and Arthur intermediate Carrie Clark. That's summertime, so that was all we have right now.
Not as many people around on summertime as there are the record. Alright. And we'll wish Ms. Douglas to take her seat. Okay, great. Okay, and next on the agenda is our consent agenda. All items listed under the subheadings will be adopted with one motion on, all items on the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion unless they are removed from the consent agenda by a trustee for discussion.
And I believe Mr. Glovier found a issue with the minutes from the last board meeting. It was stated that the motion passed unanimously, but on the FDA transfer policy, you voted against it. So we need to go back and correct that. So we need to remove, if you want to make a motion to remove that.
I move to remove the June 7th, 2022 special board meeting minutes from the consent agenda.
Okay.
To be discussed.
Okay.
After, after the rest of the consent agenda.
After the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay, a motion has been made by Mr. Glovier to remove the June 7th minutes from the consent agenda to discuss after the, after the consent agendas vote. Is there a second by anyone?
Second.
Okay, your second by?
Ms. Moody.
Okay, so there is a second done by Ms. Moody. Okay, so all in favor of removing the item, the minutes for June 7th from the consent agenda, let it be known by sound eye?
Aye.
All opposed? And that, removing, that passes, so that item will be removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
If we, if I just have a question and need clarification on something, do we have to remove it to discuss it or I could just ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the, um, the National Cooperative Purchasing, the PACE purchasing and the purchasing solutions.
I had a feeling this was going to be the question.
Okay.
We're dealing in an environment right now where we can't predict supply and we also can't control inflation. So being members of these cooperatives allows us a bigger buying area to go explore into as opposed to what we have right now. So that is the whole purpose of adding these on.
I figured that. I just wanted to, thank you.
So for the items on the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda minus the June 7th meeting notes?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda minus the meeting minutes from the special meeting, our last special meeting.
Motion by Ms. Villa Gomez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Maria Douglas. So all in favor of the consent agenda minus June 7th meeting notes, let it be known by eye?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries unanimously.
And now in regards to item 6A, board minutes.
Now in regards to item 6A of the board minutes.
You're going to have to have a motion to, move it to amendment. After it's amended, vote on to amend, then we're going to have a motion to accept it.
So it's been stated that the, uh, the record of the voting was incorrect because Ms. Moody had voted against that, so it was not unanimous. So is there a motion to amend the meeting notes from June 7th?
I make a motion that we amend those meeting minutes to reflect the accuracy of Ms. Moody's vote.
Okay, motion by Ms. Maria Douglas.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Glovier, that we amend the meeting notes to reflect the, um, the, the not, the no vote by Ms. Moody. All in favor of accepting the meeting notes from June 7th with that correction? Or is there?
Accepting the amendment. You're going to accept the amendment.
Accept the amendment?
Aye.
Ms. Villa Gomez has voted.
Motion to accept the amendment to the special meeting minutes for the meeting at June 7th, so they reflect the proper votes.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz, for voting to accept the amendment.
There you go.
Hold on.
We already had the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion's passed, so now we just need to take a vote. So now you're going to have a vote from everybody, so not one of us.
Okay, but that's what we were before, so why don't we?
I think I was confused because I thought we were like, you were still asking for a motion, but we didn't.
No, I was just waiting for him to say.
Okay, so we're now looking for a, um, a motion to accept the corrected amendment.
I make a motion to accept the corrected amendment.
So second that motion.
Okay, that's, uh, Ms. Moody has made the motion, second by Ms. Maria Douglas. All in favor of accepting the amendment, let it be known by sound eye?
Aye.
All opposed? And that passes as carried. That motion is carried. These words can kind of get you crossed up a little bit. Okay, alright, but we're getting better. Alright, so that is the consent agenda and also the, um, the motion to move off of that. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, so, uh, next we will go to, uh, section six. I'm sorry, section seven. Okay, section seven is going to be the, uh, uh, Mr. G for informational purposes.
So we have the first reading of update 119. This just came in last week, as you are, may hopefully be familiar. Policy, we arbitrarily get, you know, different updates that come to us at different periods of time. This is the latest one. Uh, I think when I got in the district, we were on update 115 and now we have cycled through, uh, all these as legislative mandates and all the things come from legislators, uh, these updates have to be updated and audits is coming over from legislation that is still in place and, and that has not taken action yet. So these are, uh, the first review. We have two reviews of it. The first one is just for informational purposes only. The second one is basically where we will take action on it. So that will be the July board meeting. Some of these are time sensitive. Um, that's why they got it, they took a long time getting it to us. And, but we need to get it on this agenda so we can have the July agenda to sit there and improve it because there's one item that will have to be in place by August 1st. And that's about our professional development. So Tracy has included a video. The video is very helpful, the tutorial video. Please watch the video and it will help explain anything. Really, there's just a few local policies. The majority of the, uh, the updates are legal. Like it says, it's coming from the legislature. But it, some of it does affect the local policies and the recommendations from Tasby. And we usually follow the recommendations from Tasby without, uh, changing it. When you change it, then it ends up costing, being additional cost to your district. So we usually follow their, their guise on what we, we need.
Okay, so I have a question about that. On what we were sent, there's red, blue and green. The red is what's going to be taken out, the recommendation. The blue is what is to be added, and then what's the green?
The green is moved from one place to another.
Okay.
Or from one section to another.
And then when we meet the next time, specifically the one that addresses special education students and their transfers with the, because we're going to open, well, not open enrollment, but we're going to be able to accept students from other places if they, um, apply. So one of them speaks to if they're, not to have academic requirement because special education students have different expectations, is that going to be discussed?
That's all factored into the process we have.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Ms. Moody, for those questions. Any additional questions we've got regarding that item? Alright, alright. Thank you very much. That was for informational purposes only. So now let's move to, uh, section number eight. Business items requiring some action, and Mr. G.
Okay, so every year we have to have a memorandum of understanding with the JJAP. We have to budget for that. Mr. Adams accounts for that into our budget. We don't necessarily want to have to send students to JAP, but if that has to happen, then we have to have the understanding with them and we have to have the budget, budgetary item for it. So this is all in preparation with that.
Have we ever sent anybody?
I'm sorry.
Hopefully we haven't, but have we sent anyone this year?
Oh, we have.
Oh, this year?
Not, yes. So we had one student over there, I think, pretty much the whole year. Sometimes that's out of our control.
Oh, yes, I understand. I just hope that we didn't have anybody.
I think it'd be great if we never had anybody, but you know. That's not life. Great, yes, alright. Uh, any additional questions regarding the JJAP memorandum of understanding? Alright, then it looks like there's some action that's needed.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2223 JJAP memorandum of understanding as presented.
Motion has been made by Ms. Villa Gomez.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Maria Douglas. Alright, any additional questions? Then the board will, uh, take a vote. All in favor of accepting the recommendation, uh, of the JJAP memorandum of understanding, let it be known by eye?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Okay, and back to Mr. G again.
Alright, so now the next item is, uh, AB, which is, uh, discusses the approval of the 2022-23 compensation package. I'm going to ask Ms. King to come down. She's put a lot of, and Ms. R, I'm sorry. I know she has put a lot of time and research into, um, the things that we, I have tasked her with as far as like looking at comparisons with other districts and, uh, with stipends and, uh.
A little bit of time, just a little bit.
Just a little bit of time. So I'll let her kind of go through what we have here for you.
So I have some information for you tonight. Good evening, by the way. Good to see you all, as usual. And Mr. Adams and I would like to present you the 2223 compensation plan. Um, in your board packet, you do have an highlight there that details out a, a brief summary of what we're looking at going to next school year. As well as a teacher salary scale comparison from current school year to propose for next school year. So in review, we have done a lot of research. We've looked at our current salary scale in comparison to small districts our size as well as reviewing salaries offered by larger districts that surround us in our DFW metroplex. We've reviewed data from the UEA teacher comparison, um, salary list as well as pooling data from Tasby's resources. They have salary studies for us to pull and you can get statewide information and drill it down between, um, current enrollment, similar enrollment, larger enrollments, um, to pull the appropriate resources. Additionally, we have taken into account feedback from our Board of Trustees. We've taken into account feedback from our current staff members as well as staff members and their comments that are exiting the district. So in today's market, we know that providing competitive salaries and competitive, competitive stipends play a huge role in retaining our current staff and onboarding new staff. However, being the smallest district in the metroplex, smallest district in Tarrant County to say, the available budget allowed to us also is very critical. Mr. G addressed in his compensation plan highlight that you have, that KISD is truly a hidden gem as we have a small town feel, but a big time appeal. It truly takes all of us from our, our food service cooks, servers, our custodial staff, classroom support, our administrative support, to our substitutes that help support us daily and absolutely from the support of our teachers to ensure that our district and our students are successful. So our hope tonight is with the increases provided by the plan, staff will financially feel their importance and the significant role that they hold in our district and in the lives of our students. So in summary, we're looking at teachers right now. Our teachers will shift from a minimum starting pay from $56,000 to $58,000. We hope that this will help shift KISD away from the 20, 28 highest ranking district in the metroplex down to the top 10. Additionally, I would like to share that historically, the teacher salary, salary scale step increases have been about $1,200 a year or $1,500 a year. But this year, we would like to increase that step $2,000 for our teachers. That will help keep us in a competitive market with teachers with years of experience such as five, 10, 15 years, 20 years plus. So this scale will also shift the average teaching, teacher working 187 days per year to a minimum daily rate of $310 and some cents. Um, looking at the average daily rate for our teachers on our scale, it would shift them to about 330, excuse me, $363, um, per day that they work. Moving on to our custodial, our food service and our entry level classroom support, food service and custodial, um, specifically shifting them from $11 an hour to $13 an hour, this will result in about a 22% salary increase for those incoming staff, which is significant. Classroom paraprofessionals will receive an increase starting rate of 1202 an hour to approximately $13 per hour. And all other classroom support, office support, clerical, operational, such as our, our lead, um, custodial services, our maintenance supervisor, food service supervisor would get a 4% hourly increase. Historically, this group of individuals have received a 2% to 3% increase per school year. We also looked at our substitutes, which we did last year as well. That's been a hot topic of conversation, so we are looking at shifting them, let me back up. Last year, we shifted them $5 additional per day worked. This year, we're looking at a little bit more. Our non-agreed subs are currently at $80 per day and we would like to shift them to $90 per day. Our degreed subs are currently at $90 per day and we would like to shift them to 100. So $10 increases for those groups and our certified substitutes are currently at $95 a day. We would like to place them at 110. And I believe that would be very competitive with Mansfield ISD. Um, long-term rate would stay. They get 10 additional, after 10 additional, um, consecutive workdays, they would get 10 additional dollars per day. Okay, we have offered the $5 differential pay on Fridays. We're going to pull that away at this time, just based on budget purposes. We have looked at stipends. Last year, we looked at stipends one by one individually, where we fall with similar comparable 4A schools. And we know that we have been lagging behind. We made some adjustments last year to kind of help bridge that gap. Specifically with classroom department heads, coaching stipends, the extracurricular duties that our staff do. Made adjustments last year. Again, this year individually, looked at them one-on-one and we're looking at shifting them as well. One thing that we're really proud of, Mr. and G and I talked about it a while ago, is masters. All of the individuals on our teacher salary scale, so those individuals are teachers, librarians and counselors. If they hold a master's degree and they're on that scale, they get an additional $1,000 per school year. And it has been that way since I've been here, been here almost 18 years. And I know that's pretty, um, similar, similarly offered by other districts. We want to shift them to 1,250. Which would affect maybe 50 to 60 teachers, uh, which would be significant for them. If they hold a PhD, which they, we don't have anyone in district right now that does, we're looking at shifting them from $1,500 per year to $1,750 per year. Additionally, I wanted to add that those returning teachers from 2122 that have completed the reading academy requirement will receive a $250 stipend payable in September. Okay, so finally, we have our administrative, our professional staff there to receive $3,000, or excuse me, no, no, 3% increase. Um, and lastly, we will continue to offer that one-time retention bonus or stipend payable in November of $500. Approximate increase for the school year, we're looking at about $680,000 to implement this proposed budget. Um, if approved tonight with your blessing, we would like to go ahead and send that out to our districts so that they're aware. Um, put it on our, our HR district website so that we can continue to onboard and fill those, um, spots on campus. And I think that's all I have for you. Does she have any questions?
Go ahead.
Um, because I think there was some confusion with the email that was sent before. So with this now, with $2,000 step, and you have step increase, is that, that includes what they? Can you just, yeah.
Can you just explain it?
Yeah.
So the email that went out, we were looking at a $1,500 step increase. With that feedback, Mr. G and Mr. Adams and I got together and talked about it, now it's going to be a $2,000 step increase. So you're going to raise your starting salary of $56,000 to $58,000. From there, if you go from year zero to year one, you're going to receive a step increase. Because of the way the scale is set from prior year, that step is actually a little bit more than $2,000. But we have to compress year zero through three, I think, based off of last year's salary scale. So if you're moving from years of experience, step four, you're going up next school year. You met your 90-day requirement. Now you're going to be on step five, you will get a $2,000 total increase to your salary.
Total, okay.
Yes.
That's what I just wanted to clarify. Because some people weren't sure about, do you do your step and then add the 1,500? And then now it's 2,000. I'm sure you found a lot of.
It's very confusing. It's confusing, yes, thank you.
Discussing, I wanted everyone to be on the same page about it. Thank you.
Question for people who report early and receive $125 a day, I believe it is. Will they be receiving their daily rate under this new financial?
So we have staff on sta, um, excuse me, staggered workdays. Those that report early and they, for coaching, for example, they report maybe 10 days early and that stipend was at, hold on, let me pull it out of my brain. How much?
$125 a day.
$125 a day. We shifted that to $175 per day. So we shifted, um, increased that for them. Also, that's at the high school and the junior high level. Junior high coaches, they typically come in five days or work five additional days. They're also going to receive the grace of $175 per day. One thing that we looked at, actually talked to or had one of the ladies in my office today talk to Mr. Oktai about the band. They come in, um, apparently they start probably July 18th for percussion, July 25th for, um, all others. So Mr. G had made the decision to add additional days in for band and they would get the $175, um, for five additional workdays.
$175, right?
Yes, what did I say?
Bumped to 175.
So 125.
Oh, I'm sorry. One, yes, yes. Bilingual, another thing we wanted to highlight, the bilingual stipend. We know that that's a very competitive market right now. We were, last year, we actually implemented bilingual for the first time at $3,000. We had approximately six teachers, um, received that. We've increased it to 3,500. Um, I know the market is a, maybe a little bit higher in, in other districts, but it's, yes.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you. I know we gave y'all this task and you received comments from the public, but, we appreciate the work that y'all put in to make sure that the teachers could be compensated, but not just the teachers because everyone
It's everyone.
is going to get something and I know every district is not capable to do that. Or is not doing it, whether they're able to do it or not.
Absolutely. And looking at our, our custodial staff, our food service staff making 11, 11, a little more than $11 an hour. They're not even bringing home, you know, $15,000 a year. This is going to be substantial for them. So they will not start at the 13. We'll have to look at their years of service and reset them on the scale. So it, it could be a jump of, you know, $3 an hour, $4 an hour.
Right, and thank, and to piggyback on to what Ms. Moody said, we appreciate you spending all that time with all the different categories and things that several of us have brought up, so.
Absolutely.
And I really like the stipend for reading academy. That's a nice one. What a surprise. That's good.
That was the last thing we talked about this afternoon. He was like, oh, yes.
I like it.
I want to echo that as well because I think that, uh, we, there were some challenges that we had with, um, um, the last one, but I think it's a home run.
Yeah.
I believe we have one teacher now, the stipend is going to compensate the ones that are coming back to us because we trained them and coming back to them.
Yes, that's the other thing.
The ones who have, well, I get it, but the ones who come back, we get it. But we have one teacher, I believe, one. And there were some extenuating circumstances, family matters that kind of backed her into that. So she's getting an extension to working. We requested an extension for her to sit there and not have to repeat the whole thing, so we'll see.
The whole reading academy?
It's the state. Yeah, I know.
Welcome, welcome to the state.
And echoing also too about, you know, speaking for myself, this wasn't just about, let's, let's increase and bump for brand-new people. This was truly about finding ways to really reward and show extra appreciation for everyone in our districts that, that's choosing to stay. And also this, we are a tiny district and money doesn't grow on trees, but thank you for being creative and doing what is in your power. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've heard the presentation regarding the compensation package. Anyone want to make a motion that we, uh, accept the, the package as presented?
I make a motion that we accept the package as presented.
Okay, and Ms. Maria Douglas has made the motion to accept the, uh, package as presented?
I'll second that.
And that is, Ms. Cruz. Okay, so it's been first and second. So let's take a vote. Are we ready for that? It's all in favor, let it be known by sound eye?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Okay, then that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much and. Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Once again, great job.
Yes, great job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So let's move to, uh, uh, item nine, section nine. Uh, Mr. G, resignations in the unit.
We've had quite a few resignations, but you see, we also have quite a few hiring and, you know, Ms. King and I kind of look at this and I've spoken with, with Ms. Williams as well. We are, I'd say we are over 90% hired out at this point in time. So if we look at our, our retention rates, um, this year, I think we're at 70, 75%. Last year, we were at 81%, the year before that, 76%, year before that, 74%. So I mean, we're tracking pretty much along. It seems like we've had a lot, but there's the ebb and flow of, of, of what we do every year. And so I think we're, we're actually in pretty good shape compared to what Ms. Williams says. She's talked to a lot of other, uh, districts and we're in good shape compared to a lot of them. So we're, we're, we feel like we're in pretty good shape.
We heard a lot of that in San Antonio, talking to other districts.
I just wanted to kind of comment for the record. I know there's been a lot of discussion with the salaries and things and I read, um, every one of those resignations and a couple of things stood out to me. People that were resigning, a lot of them made notations of just travel because of gas prices, moving to the coast, moving out of state. Um, and several of them said that they loved the district. Many of them mentioned Mr. Cagle by name, that said he was phenomenal. One of them mentioned Ms. Spitzer by name. So it was really heartwarming to see that even though we do have some resignations, which happen every year, their letters were very, um, clear that they love the district, they love the. their letters were very clear that they loved the district, they loved the job, they loved the supervisor that they were working with. There were just extenuating circumstances that led them to leave the district. And I think, so it's great to have the new compensation package. But I think it's also good to realize that sometimes people do have to leave and it doesn't have anything to do with the district, the compensation package, because it is an awesome district to work in.
Gas prices are affecting a lot of people's decisions on where they...
Right.
So the comment about being a hidden gem really is true. Let's take that to heart.
All right. Unless there's something else you feel like we need to go into a closed session on, I think we can move on to the next slide.
Okay, so let's move on to section ten, which is superintendent's report. Back to Mr. G.
All right, so a couple of things, a summer school update. We were, we, we went right out of the school year, right into the summer school. And at first, when we were looking at it, we were afraid we weren't going to have enough staff to staff the summer school the way we needed, because we had no idea with the House Bill forty-five, forty-five requirements, with the STAR testing. And, and you know, they failed that, having to do the thirty hours for each test that they failed. Particularly at the high school, that was concerning. So we tried to make sure we had enough provisions. Dr. Vu and her staff did a great job of trying to work and, and, and get people, positions created. And our principals did a good job of hiring them and getting it filled out. But you know, we were, we were scrambling, you know, to get it, get it in. And our central office group, you know, to get all those people in and get them on boarded and get them, you know, fingerprinted and everything else, it was no easy task. And it was, it got done and everybody did a great job. And so our summer school has, has been, been rocking and rolling. And we go one more week, this week was testing at the high school. We go one more week of summer school and we are done. But we have been able to accomplish and knock out a lot of the House Bill forty-five, forty-five requirements. And I think that was the main purpose of what we were trying to accomplish with summer school. We had more kids in summer school, more grade levels in summer school than we've ever had. And so, and Ms. Dickey, you know, I know you've been a great instrumental in that as well. So thank you for all your hard work. There was your, our report on summer school. Now moving into our...
Any questions about summer school?
Construction of... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, do we know what the total enrollment in summer school was?
Oh, she does.
Yes?
Some people can hear it, yeah.
We thought you might ask.
I love it.
So we had accelerated instruction, third grade through high school, credit recovery, seventh through high school, attendance makeup, seventh through high school, emergent bilingual, pre-KK, special ed social skills, which is the first year that we've had that. And it's in response to a need that we, and we've identified in our conference needs assessment. And it's amazing. It's really neat to see those kids interacting and doing things that they typically don't do over the summer and sometimes struggle with when they come back to school, as well as E S Y. As Mr. G mentioned, it was very much a collaborative effort between central office, the principals and the teachers. And I've been working, you know, I've been coordinating summer school at the central office level for, oh, what a vault, over ten years at this point. And I've never seen teachers as enthusiastic and kids as engaged in summer school as I have this year in Kennebale. And it's, it's heartwarming and it's why we're here. And so it's nice to have something to be proud of and happy with when it's a hundred and seven degrees outside. Going back to your question, so pre-KK emergent bilingual students, we have over ten. It varies by the day depending on how many come. Over four hundred and twenty-third through high school accelerated learners, and that's the HP forty-five, forty-five. And then over three hundred and seven through twelfth grade, credit recover, recovery. So we were able to get the teachers became, because this team came up with a very innovative, comprehensive, very innovative and comprehensive compensation, compensation package that paid them their hourly rate, which is more than we've ever paid. But also, we have a, an attendance bonus. So if you come every single day, and they have the choice of AM or PM, we have a scale for bonuses for people who come. And that's unique to any district around us. And it's very appealing because sometimes teachers will say, oh, we're going, I mean, yeah, of course I'll teach summer school, no problem. And then the first day they say, oh, but I'm going to Disney World the last two weeks and then I won't be here next Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday. And so that has really cut down on that, which is nice and rewards the people who are here. And we're sending a survey to staff next week, just, you know, continuous improvement and always finding ways we can be better. What can the district do better to support the program? And what are some of the positives for the year that we want to continue? Because we did a lot of new things, HP forty-five, forty-five rocked our world. And I, I think the staff have done an amazing job of coming together and addressing it and also supporting learning along the way.
I'll also add that, you know, in my conversation with Mr. Cagle, he was very complimentary of the students, you know, and just their attitude in summer school and that they were actually there and they were actually engaged in learning. And you know, it was, Ms. Dickey, who's been at the high school, I think, almost every day. So have you seen that as well?
Yes, and, and teachers that said they were willing to try some new things that they're going to carry into their classrooms in the fall. So that's been here to some engagement activities.
All right, and all that was supported with the ESAR funding and the curriculum that we brought in for it as well. Any other questions? All right, construction update. So I just got off the phone with the city manager, the new city manager, Mr. Hall. The permits have kind of been delayed from the Kennebale side. So he's going to work with us to sit there and try to facilitate and get that moving forward so we can get to work on the secure vegetables. The Arlington side, I believe we're fine there. The architects with the Arthur project are ready to move into phase two design. So we're about to start meetings on the phase two portion of that building and what that design, that's going to look like as well. So we're, you know, everything's hurry up and wait and here we are, you know, we're, we're trying to get progressions. But I think we're, we're in pretty good shape. The secure vegetables, we just got to get the permits so we can get rolling on those. So, okay. Anything, any questions on construction?
Are the delays in the, the secure vegetable permits, is that...
It's the permitting.
It's the permitting?
Yes.
Do we think that's going to endanger our schedule that you're open?
Even if we have to start school, we can, we can start school with them finishing, finishing them up. That won't hinder us from stopping, being able to start school. It's just be a nuisance, so. So I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
We were just hoping to have it all done before they got back. Talked about summer school, that. I'm going to, you know, compliment all of you. I feel like we had a very good SLI, knowing Ms. Moody's going to work. So you know, when she goes and gets her training, I think there's a lot of things that as we're moving forward in July's meeting that we will, you know, start bringing forward and progressing with. The, I, I felt overall it was a good bonding experience and that, you know, we have a very good SLI in San Antonio. I hope that, you know, we continue the momentum off of that.
I think a lot of those sessions are going to help us, I think, moving forward. A lot of great ideas, a lot of good training.
It can be overwhelming.
A little bit.
And I think another thing that is beneficial was that I think you all got to hear that other districts are experiencing things sometimes far worse than we are.
I was going to say, if not worse.
If not worse, yeah.
We're all in the same boat.
We're not that bad off.
So you know, sometimes things aren't as, as, as bad as they may seem sometimes. So, anyway, but I appreciate all your efforts and your, you know, one thing that we, we've seen before, y'all are not shy about getting your hours, you know. And I mean, I, I do appreciate the willingness that y'all have to, to continue your, your, your knowledge base. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about any of the, the last items that were on... We talked about. Any more things to input about the SLI?
It was phenomenal. Awesome, very script.
Lots of great ideas.
Lot of learning.
Lots of great ideas.
Great. All right, that being all, we'll move to number eleven, which is the board discussion. So there was a suggestion about pushing up our meeting from seven to six.
Or earlier, depending on what y'all's schedule is. I know that while we were in SLI, you know, somebody was like, well, our meetings, you know, they last so long. And I was like, well, we start so late, you know, and compared to other districts, we're starting our meetings at seven o'clock. I don't know where that came from. You know, that's normally there is, you know, some districts they start at five and other districts they start at five-thirty, sometimes at six. So you know, if you are amenable to moving that up, I, I think our staff would appreciate it because a lot of them have families and lives that they'd like to get to, you know, sooner. If we could do that instead of waiting until finishing meetings at nine, ten o'clock at night, so.
I believe it's Devin and Ms. Moody might be the ones that come from the farthest after from work.
Six is good for me. If I'm late, I'm just...
You go as long, okay.
And I can do six without a problem.
That works for...
Six is the best time.
Ms. Gomes.
Yeah, I would like it. I would appreciate six much better too.
Do we have to make a motion for that or put it on the next agenda?
I don't think it's, it's just something procedural.
We're going to, and just a second, we're going to discuss next meeting dates and times. So we can go, just set it at that particular, if I believe I'm correct, we can do that. Okay, all right. So then why don't we go ahead and move to section eleven, where we discuss the upcoming meeting dates and times?
I thought we were already on section eleven, sorry.
Do you?
Sorry. I thought we were on section eleven.
That we were on ten. Now we're on eleven.
And three states, six o'clock would be a good time for us to change our meeting list. Now that we're officially on eleven A.
Yeah, so we are on eleven A, so let's take a look at time. So next, next month, we, that's for the month of July. We are looking at... Pulling up mine. Okay, so July, the twenty-eighth, I believe?
The twenty-eighth, because our staff will not be available on the twenty-first. So it would be more beneficial to move it to, bump it to the twenty-eighth, that would be helpful for our staff.
So we're looking at the twenty-eighth at six P M. That works for everyone?
Yes, sir. Well, I had said last month, I won't be here, we're out of town that week, but go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, so we will miss you dearly.
I will miss you dearly on the beach.
All right, so we have a date. Okay, so the...
The other eleven B was, I can't see it on mine.
Well, I don't have eleven B, all I have is eleven A, dates and times.
I think it's just one, I guess to stay both of those items under A.
Right, they're both under A.
Is there anything else that we need to discuss?
We've already agreed on the six o'clock start time, so I think everybody here there.
I'm going forward, we'll just do six.
Once she, you get done with the SLI in, in June, okay? And then we need to start looking at our board operating procedures, bring those back up around and that will probably be brought up in the July meeting as well. So we're sort of going through there. You two have to go through board orientation, so we'll take you, Dr. Vu, Ms. Adams, and I will take you through board orientation. And then we will start progressing with the board operating procedures.
I think there's a, can we open that up to anyone else who wants to go through that as well?
The orientation?
What the board operating procedures are.
I think we're going to go through that together, you know, so I'll, I'm over in the July meeting.
Okay.
You know, I'll get it, I'll send it out probably ahead of time and let y'all review it and then we can kind of talk through it at the meeting.
All right, okay, great, all right.
It's not on the agenda, so if I'm not ordered to say it, you're out of it. I had a question, someone asked me about the students' lunches for next year. So are they going to get the free lunches? Parents are asking.
So I, I will, Ms. Adams, you want to handle that?
She got it before.
I can do it, you have to walk away down. He started, he started.
As of June thirtieth, free lunches and breakfast goes away. It's part of the ESAR publication, or the laws had to do with all the financial. We will go back to NCLV, full pay, reduced pay, free. There is a bill in the House to extend it for another year. But USDA or TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture, United States Department of Agriculture, cannot extend it without legislative authorization. But there is a bill in the House to extend it for one more year.
Do we know when it's going to be seen?
Huh?
Do we know when it's going to be seen?
They've already had some hearings on it, but... You know, they're, they're fixing to go on recess. I mean, if you follow political or politics very closely on the legislative side, they're gone most of the summer.
This is at the federal level, right?
This is federal level. It's not state level, this is federal level.
Yeah, that's why I said...
Our state doesn't start back until January. Was it two years ago when we went into it? We started out, actually started the school year on the full pay, reduced pay, free pay meals. And then by September third or fourth, the new law had gone into effect and everybody went to free. But right now, as of June thirtieth, all of that goes away.
So Ms. Adams, if, if it is not extended, do they return to the same rate they were paying before? Or is...
We will have to go through the application process to make that determination. We have what's called direct certification. If they're on food stamps or WIC or any of those things, we get a list from the, the state that says that they qualify for free. But then everybody else that's not on those programs has to fill out an application to get reduced or, or free.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my question really was about would the full price stay at the same dollar amount it was?
Well, that's the sixty-four dollar question, because we really don't know how much we're going to get reimbursed next year yet. That's supposed to be coming out shortly.
They have to recalculate.
To be determined.
To be determined, but our food service director, Lori, got her bid. We belong to a cooperative and the average increase was eighteen percent. But the stuff that you use a lot, some, most of it, it doubled.
I got to go back to the consent agenda, this is for our commodities and the things we need for food services. This is why we were looking at those other co-ops.
I mean, right now, we're still under the old, Lori's buying a whole lot of stuff right now. We're going to have a lot of stuff in inventory that should get us at least till Christmas. And then we'll have to start paying the higher prices. I mean, the vegetables and the milk and stuff, we'll just have to buy as we go, but... Shelf stable stuff.
I have one more question for Mr. Adams while I was there. On, on our consent agenda as well, I saw the construction cost and pricing and it also had the valuation for the property that we're selling.
Yes.
Just for the record, just for clarification, was that a proposed value? Or have we sold that property and received that, those funds?
That's the three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars is how much money we did receive.
Okay, that, we did receive that. So that transaction has been completed and we received the money?
Yes.
Okay.
They're doing a lot of utility work, if you've driven down that direction, getting ready to, I guess, do whatever, build a new bridge, I guess.
Awesome, thank you.
Great, all right. So are there, any other questions? About to move into our favorite part of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn this meeting and get up out of here.
Since we're in section twelve and it has been motioned by Mr. Gloria that we adjourn, I don't think I need a second. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.